Good afternoon, everyone. The hour being 12:05 due to a modest rain delay. Welcome to this special call to meeting of the Danville City Commission today, Wednesday, June the 19th. We are here to discuss the consideration and possible action on engagement of a professional recruiting firm for the city manager hiring process. After that, we'll have any other discussion related to that process if that's necessary, and that will be the limitation of our discussion today, and we'll move right to adjournment. With that, I'm certain that unless there's any preliminary conversation from the commission, I'll just let Mr. Scott lead the way. Anybody? Ron, lead the way, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. I appreciate the opportunity to make recommendations to you on the process that you might choose to follow in searching for a city manager to follow me in this position. We talked about this briefly at the last city commission meeting, and my understanding of what we wish to do is to identify a group of well-experienced professional recruitment firms that would submit proposals to you for your consideration, and then you would select one of those based on their qualifications and their price. In thinking about those firms that are most qualified to recommend to you candidates for the position, I turned to the newsletter published very frequently by the International City and County Management Association, and they have jobs listing in those. And I've seen these for years in terms of the cities that are advertising for various key management positions. And quite frequently in those cities of any substantial size, they have recruitment firms that are listed as the contact point and who serve as the arm of the city commission in soliciting candidates, reviewing their qualifications, talking with you as a city commission, for example, at the beginning of the process in terms of what is desired in terms of a community fit here, in terms of the various projects the city is currently engaged in, and what you might want to be engaged in, the various qualifications of the candidate to try to arrive at what you deem to be an ideal candidate in terms of experience, skill set, personality, all of those things prior work history. So, in thinking about this, I did turn to the ICMA newsletter and looked at a variety of communities across the country to come up with six firms that are attached to this overview of an executive search process as what I would say are the leading firms that regularly engage in this process. They are either national in scope, or they have substantial regional presence and work activities, such as the southeastern United States, or mid-century, or middle of the Ohio Valley, multi-state firms that operate. In looking at search firms generally, there are probably hundreds or thousands of executive search firms. Most of those serve the private sector. The recruitment of city and county or special district, schools and special districts are more of a specialized type of firm. There aren't as many out there. And again, looking at just our type of business as evidenced by advertisements for open positions in the ICMA newsletter, I came up with these six firms. There are other firms that I know of, for example, some that operate regionally, like in the northeast around Seattle, Washington, but in even having some conversation with them in terms of their outreach to Kentucky for candidates for their jobs in prior months, and this is like over a long time ago, they, for example, indicate that they don't really have a intent to practice in this area. So I've come up with what I think are those that practice and are regularly practicing in this service in our region or do so nationally, and those firms are listed alphabetically on the pages following an overview of the process. Each of those, again, has years of experience. Some, interestingly, started with one of their other larger firms, and after a number of years formed their own firm, like any law practice or other professional type of activity. You sometimes find people who are skilled starting their own companies, and I think there may be one or two of those that started with a larger firm and started their own activities. I think any of these could serve well as your search firm. They will talk with you directly without my involvement in terms of the ideal candidate that you are seeking. I say that because I don't want to stand in the way between you and their, your conversations with them, because we all have different skill sets and backgrounds and personality traits and so forth. So I think that that process should begin, again, with, if you agree with it, with me as your staff sending out to them just a quick email or a contact saying that we'd like to receive your proposal by a certain date for evaluation by the city commission, who would then determine which one of you, one of the six, would be retained to provide services for Danville.
We wouldn't, we wouldn't have an RFP that they would answer. We'd just be more like a call-out to what you got, or curious how you, I was wondering how you did that.
Well, I may have been less than clear on that at our last discussion, but this reprint from the ICMA executive search process, the overview, how does the executive search process work typically, in all of these, they follow the same sort of process. And it's, again, their first coming for a chat with you to evaluate the position and the employment need. They create a job profile that you have input on in helping to shape what you're looking for. They have an outreach recruitment effort through advertising, their networking, their sources they utilize all the time. They would have a candidate screening and evaluation of whatever number they get in to come up with a shorter list, and then they would suggest those to the city commission for interviews. They do, they can help you in that finalist interview process, and they can do background checks. Now, that's kind of the full boat recruiting, and I think that's really what's desired to keep from having a situation where you've got too many cooks in the kitchen. You want one firm that's got experience in doing this. And so I could, you know, just attach this as an example of the type of services the city wishes to have. It's typically what they do, and I thought it would be sort of micromanaging for me to define what they would do when they know their business better than I do, and what you're looking for is a professional firm to help you obtain the best candidate available.
Yeah, that makes sense. I just wondered how, you know, how you got the bids to come in, what's the process? So you would just say, give us your, what do you do and how much you charge for it? Or that's why I wondered if you gave them something to look at so they'd all be on the same page to begin with, kind of deal, but...
Yes, I can try to do that. Now, I think as you review, and you may not have time here to review in deep detail, but the sort of selected descriptions of the consulting firms that I took from their websites and their marketing materials suggest that some firms have slightly different approaches in how they would provide the service, but all will follow essentially this sort of similar path. And so I could attach this rather standard description, which I'm sure they're all intimately familiar with as it's on the ICMA webpage and they advertise in the ICMA newsletter. They know it backwards and forwards, but simply to suggest that these are the type of recruiting, recruitment services that we seek to have your firm provide, provide us your proposal to do so, and the cost for the various elements of doing, and do that by X date. And so I think, Commissioner, with the thought of trying to have a level playing field and have everyone respond on the same basis, it would be a good idea to attach this and say, this is what we are seeking your assistance with, and tell us how you would do that and what the cost would be, and who would be involved, and your availability, and et cetera.
Thank you.
But I didn't, I didn't pre-write that out because it's, it's something I could do, but I think if you just do the general incentive out, that would, that would do it.
I was just curious more than anything, and certainly you know more about it than I do, so I'll let you just decide what's best and go from there.
Well, I think this is, and I appreciate that. If you accept the recommendation to utilize these firms who, again, have demonstrated experience in recruitment throughout the United States and regionally, to receive the expression of interest from the city commission or the mayor and the commission as a whole, and so advising that they are one of six that you're seeking to receive a proposal from, and you want that proposal to specify the full recruitment services, which are enumerated in examples that are given on the attached page, and you would like to receive those by a date you determine, I think that would be specific, it would be clear to them, and it would be clear to us as to the process we're embarking upon. Because you will get those six back, you will then review them, and you will determine among those which one you think is the best firm to do this for the city of Danville.
Very good.
And I mentioned before in our city commission, you know, the ICMA professional ethics do allow me to, as city manager active in the, employed still as city manager, to assist in these matters. There are some ethical restraints that I could not do, but all of this is certainly within my, what you're paying me for to do generally anyway as being an administrative arm of the city commission. What I could not do, for example, is to comment on the qualifications of any, any individual candidate as being qualified or non-qualified. What I intend to do, consistent with those ethical guidelines, is simply to suggest to you that these are firms well-experienced and providing the service, and really sort of leave it up to you from that point forward in terms of how you proceed.
Yeah, I think that'll, I think that'll be helpful, actually, having you involved.
A question has been asked of me by one of the commissioners just briefly before this meeting in terms of what would be a reasonable time period to expect firms to respond, and in answering that question, we have to be mindful that we have, in essence, seven months to complete this process, and I think that is a...
To review and possibly in special meeting that week or at your regular meeting on the 22nd, you might get into greater discussion about those. I do think you want to try to come to a conclusion on the search firm in July so you don't burn up another month or part of it.
I think this is a, personally, the way to go. I was also wondering though if, you know, there are people maybe locally that would want to apply that have, that maybe wouldn't be on the radar of one of these firms. Is there a process by which they could do that? I don't know that it will happen, I just...
Well, while we're not required to, that's a good point. I think people locally by reading the paper and just scuttlebutt will know within our community that the position is available, but they may not be knowledgeable of the exact deadline for applying and so forth. So we could have as a requirement of the RFP that they have at least one ad in our local paper giving knowledge of the opportunity to apply. Or certainly we could have it on and/or on the city webpage in terms of whoever is selected to manage the process. We could put that out as public information so that that would be an additional...
That's a good idea.
So if we, I believe there's six in this package, correct?
Yes, sir.
So if we received a proposal for each of the six, and let's just assume for a moment that we, for whatever reason, settle on three of those six as a consensus. I would think we would want to set up some kind of interview with...
...that you reflected earlier, all of which are under the purview of another individual, be it the city manager, county judge, Parks and Recreation Board, what have you. So it would be somewhat odd for city staff to be involved in the hiring of their eventual boss. So the cart is definitely before the horse in that scenario. Furthermore, to streamline a professional process that is truly independent and through a review, you would need the engagement of an outside vendor. And to follow up with Commissioner Cottle's question about potential local interest, I think it's important to, again, that we all, once the process is decided and determined, that it's adhered to strictly. And by that, I mean if there is local involvement, the only conversation should be had locally is a referral to the firm that you select to submit an application or to get additional information.
All applications will go through the firm and then they will vet those and send them to us.
I think you answered my question well. So here's another question. We're well involved with Kentucky League of Cities. Do they provide a service similar to this or aid in this at all?
Some state leagues, such as the Michigan Municipal League, are regularly engaged in recruitment services for city managers. Kentucky League of Cities is not. So they don't have an established practice and even if you do, you're limiting this, perhaps, the number and qualifications and candidates to a geographic area when that might not be wise to do.
I'd also add to that that the Kentucky League of Cities tends to be heavily favored towards the mayor council form of government and not the city manager form of government. So their level of expertise in our form of government, I would consider somewhat limited. And that's just factual, not opinion testimony.
So I'm, I feel a compelling need to look at the calendar and start at least blocking some time in. Otherwise, I think we're all going to have conflicting calendars and we're never gonna, we're never gonna be able to have all five of us together in any, in any number of successive meetings. So let's say we get everything in on the 22nd, Ron. That gives plenty of time. Or did we say, no, we said before that?
We said, I believe.
The 12th. Okay, so...
Is your intention, Mayor, to maybe narrow down to, say, three the week of July 15th and then...
Yes.
Have a decision by the 22nd of those three in July?
We can have that, we can have the decision by the 22nd of three that we want to interview in greater depth.
Okay. Yes, that's what I'm...
So I'm gonna propose on the 16th. In-person interviews? Do we want to have Skype interviews? What is your pleasure? And I'm also gonna look at Ron and say, is it above and beyond to ask for them to come to us?
I don't think it is, but it may, may add to the cost of the overall effort. You know, I don't know if they will... Usually it's professional services plus travel expenses, so it would just be in the travel expense bucket probably.
Do you have a recommendation?
It's always good to meet face-to-face.
I'd rather do it that way.
I'd rather do it that way. And I understand that there's some additional costs, but considering the gravity of the choice here, it's incremental.
One of the considerations, and of course I can outline this process that we intend to follow in selecting and sending it out initially. So in making their proposals, they will understand if they're one of the three finalists, they will have to incur cost in coming. But as we all know, in terms of making airline reservations, if you make it last minute, you pay twice as much. So there is some consideration into deciding who you want to come and giving them notice and giving them seven days or something to get here, which will reduce the cost of it.
Well, let me back up to an overall question. And you may have already addressed this. What is your estimate cost of this search going to be?
I think it's premature to, for me to advance a number on that. I think we'll know more when we get the proposals in. And I think that's really the best thing to say. I mean, if you view the effort as being a key effort, which I certainly do and I believe you do, you know, whether it's a little bit more or less, probably pales by comparison of getting the right firm ultimately to get the right person.
And looking at the six, if the, the ones coming from the West Coast, I would, I would be okay with a Skype interview for somebody coming that far 'cause that's...
Right, yeah.
Right.
Really expensive trip. So we could, we could leave it open to...
Depends on who it is.
And the location, yeah. There's a couple of them pretty close. Wouldn't hurt them to come.
Some could possibly drive here, but...
Big estate, your big old house.
Hey, I got room.
It's mainly question to answer. I'm good with Skype as well. It saves the overall expense, at least with the three. And certainly when we get down to one, then they can start spending their money coming to see us.
And, you know, the, the travel...
Wednesday and looking at the timeframe, say four o'clock, that would be three o'clock on the West Coast. We'd be, we'd be one o'clock on the West Coast. We'd be in good shape.
So, yeah, and I'm just saying, block the whole day out. And that way, we've at least reserved that on our calendars and we can trim it down from there.
You want the 24th one of the, of the day, okay.
Just, just so we all don't get conflicts on our calendar for that day.
And again, to Stephen Dexter's point, you may review those proposals, costs associated with it, expertise of the firm or individuals providing the service, and decide that there are two that you want to have final discussions with versus three.
Yeah. Yeah. We should just say the finalists, yeah.
So you just want us available pretty much nine to five on the 24th and see how it plays out?
Yeah. I think that's in our collective best interest.
What'd you say, nine to five?
That's our flexibility, nine to five.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, looking just a little bit further down that road, after your 24th Skype interview and your conclusions from that, you would want to have the personal interview. And do you think it would be timely to do that on July the 31st, that following Wednesday?
Say again?
Well, you're gonna want, you're gonna want a finalist to come visit with you personally. And so do you want to do that a week later or longer than that after the 24th?
Probably a week when you find out who they are, where they're coming from, probably. Yeah.
That'd be a little easier to schedule since it would just be one person or firm.
I'm going to...
Unless you're leaving town. Are you leaving town or something?
I have, I have lots of flexibility on the 30th. I have limited flexibility in the afternoon on the 31st.
30th would be fine, I think.
It'll be the four of you all when I'm gone that whole week.
Oh, okay.
But that's okay.
Where are you going?
Working. Out of town.
Oh, you work. I thought you were going on some fun Key West.
I think it's critical that all five of us be here.
That'd be perfect, sure.
And what were you thinking for the 31st anyway?
Someone here in person?
Was that gonna be the someone in person? Is that what we're getting to?
Yes.
Okay. When you'll be back, Rick?
If you want, if you want to try it the morning of the 31st...
Rick's still...
He's still here.
That's right. Okay, let's, let's just go the next week.
August, week of August 5th. Yeah, as far as that goes, okay.
I can make that work.
Will you be back, Rick?
Yep.
You'll be back the 5th?
August, yep.
I can make the 5th work. I can make the 6th work.
Yeah, let's do it early, as soon as possible, I think. Get it rolling.
What? What you're coming?
Do it as soon in August as we can. The 5th would be, would be good.
You want that all-day thing?
I think that's prudent, although the afternoon is much better for me, but I can make it work.
Well, again, getting to know who's coming would be just the time, I think.
Let's do this. Let's do this. Let's do this. Let's do the 5th and the 6th because they may have some conflicts on their side.
Right, that's kind of what I was...
And I'm even gonna go as far as to throw in the 7th just to, 'cause their calendars get as full as ours do, I'm sure.
Okay.
Now that'll be for in-person interviews.
With one finalist firm, right?
Right. So then, should we be prepared to make a decision on the 8th or the 9th? Or even after the last on the 7th?
Well, here's a, here's a thought for you. And I don't, assuming that you have a favorable conclusion after the interview of the firm, while they're here, if that, if you don't have to go back to the drawing board and consider another firm, it would be productive to have them engage in conversation with you about the type of candidate and so forth. So it probably optimally would be more than just a selection of a firm. It would also be that firm talking with you to begin that process of defining the candidate, their skill set, the challenges, to try to get a start on that process. Right? Now, if you weren't able to do that, of course, that would, that'd be another matter. But if that firm is here with that individual, why not begin, you know, on that day or the following day while they're here?
Makes sense.
Okay.
Because I think from that meeting and their feedback to you in terms of their conclusions or what they heard you describe and what your desired candidate would be, they could produce then the job ad, the description of the community, have that back to you for a final approval and then mid-August, if not earlier, begin the candidate search process.
Do we need a motion to direct you to send the letters or just something you're gonna...
I think that would be good, for the good of the order, it would be good just to direct that I implement the discussion and the schedule and the process.
I will make that motion, what Ron said.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion.
Did you get that, Ashley? Did you make something out of that? Congratulations.
Kevin moves whatever Ron said, right?
Well, I think you've come to a good process in terms of a reasonable and realistic timeline, a process for reviewing all of the firms. Another process for a more in-depth review of the top three. Again, a very considered process and inviting a finalist in to make sure that you have confidence in what they intend to do and the capabilities of that firm and also their discussion with you at that meeting or the following day about how to get immediately started on the process. So I think that's all good. It's real good, I think.
Could be a lot of time spent here.
Call for the vote. You have a first and second?
First and second, further discussion done. Call for the vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Do you hear a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Motion made in second, and all in favor say aye. Opposed, like sign. We are adjourned.